Good evening. Welcome to Town Council Public Hearing, Reg. 8th, February 21st, 2019. We get a call.
President.
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 Let us establish the forum. Can we stand for the long and short?
I'm glad that we just took a flag from the United States of America and into the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start tonight... Please shut off all your phones. There's probably going to be some emotions and stuff with the angle parking. Please be respectful of others. Once you're done speaking, please remind me respectfully that there is still going on when you get up to leave, to try to please as possible. I appreciate that. Of course, this is a public hearing. I propose changing the angle parking on the north side of 100 and 300 blocks in Mason Avenue. Come on up. Everybody has three minutes to speak. It will be time. Most of the buzzer goes off.
Do you involve me? You involve me?
You're going to go on.
All right. Good evening. For those attending that haven't had the pleasure of meeting, I'm Shelley Morton, Program Manager of Cape Charles Main Street. I so appreciate the Town Council scheduling this imperative public meeting about parking in the town of Cape Charles, and my hope is that you'll be able to vote in the affirmative for Phase One tonight, so we can begin the VDOT application and harvest. And thank you all for showing up. This is fantastic to have everyone in the room. While some of you may be well aware of the entire process for Phase One that brought us here, I thought it was important to bring this for tonight. At the very first community meeting upon the formation of Main Street with Codenumber Virginia Main Street, we asked the community of Cape Charles for their feedback. Parking was the number-one cited change that the community wanted to save. Over 50 survey respondents of 153 cited removing the reverse angle parking in response to the question, "Downtown Cape Charles would be better if." It's clearly a critical issue for our community. Cape Charles Main Street announced that that was one of our top strategic initiatives. The Design Committee took it on as one of their... We have committees. They took it on. The Design Committee formed a multiple stakeholder subcommittee to tackle parking in the town of Cape Charles. After lots of meetings to brainstorm, extensive assessments, informal interviews, the team drafted a phase approach to enhancing the parking. With that phase approach, the Cape Charles Main Street Board voted on that. Then Cape Charles Main Street held a community input session with over 50 attendees. I think it was more like 70, but that's all I tracked after 50. After the input session, Cape Charles Main Street presented the phases to the Planning Commission and asked for a joint subcommittee with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission graciously honored our request. Multiple parking subcommittee sessions were held with numerous stakeholders, including the town of Cape Charles, three planning commissioners, a CCVA rep, CCMS, Cape Charles Main Street Board members, and volunteer members of the aforementioned Design Subcommittee. After extensive work, the final Phase One parking plan was presented to the Planning Commission, and they voted to move it on to Town Council. The Phase One recommendations, as you all are aware, were presented to you by Zach as the Town Planner in January for a discussion. And that brings us to today. We're honored to be able to bring such an imperative initiative to you tonight. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank everyone. I'll keep the list short. Everyone, every committee, everyone that's been involved. And I'm incredibly lucky to partner with this extensive and passionate community to help Cape Charles be our bestest. Thank you for listening. I would ask that you strongly consider driving fruition on voting for Phase One tonight in the affirmative, the high season's approaching.
Good evening, Mayor and Cape Charles Town Council. I'm Phil Stram. I live at 302 Arnie's Loop at Cape Charles. I'm a Commissioner on the Town Planning Commission. I'm on the Board of Directors for Cape Charles Main Street, and I'm on the Town Parking Subcommittee. Parking on Mason Avenue was a topic of discussion as part of the Comp Plan update. The two parking lots on the south side of Mason Avenue were to be incorporated into Strawberry Street Station, thus removing significant parking spaces. I was a Commissioner when it was proposed to the Planning Commission at the June 2nd, 2014 Planning Commission Comprehensive Plan Work Session with the AAMPDC to review parking reform in Cape Charles. The Commission was informed that perpendicular and angled parking along streets is normally prohibited, but that reverse angle parking had been approved by the state in 2013. We were told that there was one VDOT project where reverse angle parking was planned impersonally. The Commissioners agreed that the goal was to focus on Mason Avenue, recommending reverse angled parking. Bay Avenue would be studied after the parking on Mason Avenue was implemented. The Town Council approved the reverse angle parking on Mason Avenue and as it appears in the updated 2016 Comp Plan. Cape Charles Main Street held a strategic planning session in the fall of 2017 and conducted a survey as part of the branding effort. In both cases, the top concern was reverse angle parking and the need for additional parking. A Town Parking Work Session was held, and reverse angle parking was also a top concern. A Parking Subcommittee was formed comprised of Town Council, Planning Commission, Town Employees, Cape Charles Main Street, business owners, and residents. The Parking Committee initially came up with a three-phased approach. They revised Phase One, included reversing the reverse angle parking to head-in parking and striping the north side of Mason Avenue from Harbor to Bay and from Peach Street to Fig Street for parallel parking. The Parking Committee Phase One Recommendation went to the Planning Commission in December 2018. The Planning Commission approved the Parking Committee's Phase One Recommendation, and the recommendation was forwarded to Town Council. That's where we are today. Having been involved from the beginning of the parking issues as a member of the Planning Commission, a member of Cape Charles Main Street, and a member of the Parking Committee, I fully endorse the recommendation of reversing the parking to head-in front-end parking and the further striking to Mason Avenue. Thank you.
Molly Pickler? I'm Molly Pickler, 501 Monroe Avenue. I am the Co-Chief of the Design Committee.
Molly, can you put the mic down to him?
Co-Chief of the Design Committee. I think that Shelley and Bill have given a little thorough background of the activities and the processes that have been following regarding parking. Of course, our mission is to support and grow the commercial district in Cape Charles. I feel like it's very important that you all know, and I'm going to give you some examples of why I think it's very important that we do change the reverse angle parking. We get feedback from the business owners quite regularly, and there's one that I want to tell you about where the visitors were so upset over getting a parking ticket because they didn't adhere to the reverse angle parking, that they took all their purchases back in and returned them to the business. The second example I want to point out is, and I personally saw this. Last summer, a family of five came on Brown Dog. Everybody had ice cream. The father got so angry over the parking ticket on his car that I heard him say, "Let's get out of this town. We're never coming back." And the last example I want to give you is a recent letter that's been posted in The Mirror where a family came to Cape Charles to visit and, of course, got a ticket, and they claimed it was dark, they couldn't see a sign, and that it wasn't illuminated for them to be able to see. So they said they were very disheartened and disappointed in their trip to Cape Charles. So this is not what we want, and I just feel like I wanted to share these examples with you to let you know how important I feel that we should change this reverse angle parking stat. Thank you. Rob Smithwick?
Evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Rob Smithwick. My wife and I live at 11 Kings Bay Drive here in Cape Charles and Commodore Yacht Club, which has nothing to do with parking, but we did have an incident that was worth noting. My wife had parked at the coffee house and had parked like she was supposed to, and ironically, another resident who wasn't a tourist or a visitor coming to town but was trying to park in the same fashion and backed into our car. It looks nice enough to come inside and made it all scary, but it was uncomfortable for her to have to admit that, and then it was clumsy for us to have to look for all those pairs and so forth. So I would encourage you all to reverse the reverse.
Jim Rangier?
Good evening, Jim Rangier. I live at 315 Harbor, and I'm speaking in favor of reversing the reverse as well. A lot of people, friends, come here encouraged by, I mean, to see the good things the town has got to offer, and unfortunately, most of the time, the first thing they say is, "Man, you guys have got some really jacked-up parking there." And unfortunately, when we do something like a Festa Friday and we see people that are from out of town, you talk to them, and it's the first impression a lot of people see. I strongly recommend changing it to, again, diagonal and head-in parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stram.
Karen Day?
Hi there. I'm Karen Day. I live at 506 Monroe Avenue, and here's my experience. And this happens to me every time I back in, and I'm a good backer-upper, but I back in no problem. Every time I go in to get in my car to leave, there's this huge truck on my left side, and I inch out, and one car goes by, and then I inch out some more, another car goes by. And if I inch out enough, and a car goes by fast enough, it's going to hit me. Now, I'd like to tell you what happened to a friend of mine who went to Florida. He inadvertently made a traffic infraction, and a policeman came and gave him, instead of a ticket, a courtesy warning. And my friend left with a really nice impression that the town was friendly, and, of course, he was warned that any other infraction, he'd get a real ticket. But I thought that was a really friendly way for Florida to welcome their tourists. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stram.
Diane Diamico? My name is Diane Diamico. I live at 602 Jefferson Avenue. I'm a member of the Planning Commission. I'm on the Ad-Hoc Parking Commission, and I'm also on the Cape Charles Main Street Design Committee. We have had lots and lots of meetings, lots and lots of discussions, and I want you to know that I fully support Phase One parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diamico.
Phil Getkin?
I'm Phil Getkin. I live at 602 Jefferson, and because I normally walk everywhere in town, I really would sort of ambivalent about parking. I didn't really care which way we parked. However, my sister-in-law came to town this summer and had a brand-new car with three backup cameras on it and ran right into somebody, and she backed up. And she said she would never come back to Cape Charles until we change this law, so I'm here to ask you to change the law.
Good evening. Reverse parking, I've been looking into now for the last four or five months.
Did you state the name and address of the address, please?
Richard Legal. I live in Lake Creek. I think most people in LA are familiar with the lifestyle. Okay. Reverse angle parking, in my mind, is the only way to drive. Looked at different cities and towns in both this state and New York State, and even down into California. The nice thing about it is that when you get out of the car, you're contacted by your doors, because your doors open this way on most cars unless you've got a two-seater. That gives you protection from traffic coming down. The other thing is, if you've got children, you can let the children have a back, they walk straight up onto the sidewalk, and they're safe. It seems to be the most practical way of doing. I looked at it, and I think you could save a lot of time, a lot of money, on just a 45-degree angle parking, or you could make it even a 60, to squeeze a few more cars in. Now, if you go over to where the two new garlands are on the main street here, the curb over there is nine inches. On the other side, where we have the hardware store, it's only four and a half inches. So if you've got a car on that side, you bang the rear of the door. I would suggest that down there, we make that truck parking only, so when the truck driver comes in, he pulls up, runs over to the sidewalk, takes off his dolly, and takes his product across the street up into where the hardware store is going to. Because it's wonderful what happens if you find that you've got an angle parking along this side, okay? And then on the other side, you've got kids that are parked around there. I would much have taken that two layers of pack, see if they were down the block and down. And I've seen kids run out. Not their fault, they run out, and you hear brakes screaming. So my recommendations go to the angle parking, back again. If you can't back in, you're simply driving it. It's very easy to do. As the lady said just now, sometimes you have a blind spot where a van has pulled in. It makes it illegal for vans to come on the side.
No, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you, Ms. Stram.
Elise Davis?
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, Councilmember. Thank you for this opportunity. I've been resident of Cape Charles for the last 18 months, and during that process, I became involved with the Main Street Parking Committee. As I knew before I moved here and since I've been here, tourism is one of our economic engines, and we need to treat it with the respect that it is due. Prior to moving here to Cape Charles, I lived for 43 years in a town where tourism was the economic engine, and via my employment, that has also put a roof over my head for that period of time as well. Quite frankly, our job is heads in beds and retention, which that's what we're working on here in Cape Charles as well. I feel like with my experience, I can speak with some authority about the tourist experience. We have all gone on vacation, all of you here, all of you here. We have all gone on vacation, and we've done that to relax, unwind, rejuvenate, and experience a new place. What we have all done on vacation as well is have vacation brain. We check out of the things that are normal and usual to our lives. We're experiencing something new. We want to unwind. We want that relaxation. Reverse angle parking is counterintuitive. It does not fit into the vacation brain, the vacation mindset, hence the stories we've heard before I came up here. I would like very much if you would please consider voting to reverse the reverse angle. Thank you.
Andrew Palmer?
Hi, I'm Andrew Palmer. I live at 300 Mason Avenue, and I own two businesses on Mason Avenue at 316 and 219, so 226 Mason Avenue. So it's fair to say I've spent nearly 24 hours a day on Mason Avenue. We have had over a running public interest to reverse the reverse, if I'm saying. And I don't think you'll find anyone who spends their days on Mason Avenue, any of the merchants, anyone who has literally spent day after day watching the experience of reverse angle parking, who does not support anywhere near it. I've also been on the Parking Committee as the Business Association's representative, and one thing that hasn't been noted is, on that committee, we have had a subject matter expert who worked for the List Department of Transportation for many years. As has been said, the current situation gives a negative impression to many visitors. There's also a lot of residents who might not live in town, but they just are coming to town from the county during high season because the non-reverse angle spots are hard to come by. You know, it's been mentioned visibility is poor. Has it been mentioned our curb design is not... This was just thrown out. A third, and I counted, a third of all the spots require at least one side of the car, if not both, to actually walk out into traffic around it, thus commencing the claim benefits because there are flower beds or other obstacles that keep them from walking directly up under the curb. We've heard lots of opinions here and there, people saying, and I've heard, the most comment is, if people can't do this, they shouldn't be driving. Well, how many of you do things great the first time you've ever tried to do it? The issue is, we have a whole lot of people coming through town that this is unfamiliar, that this is unfamiliar to, and that's just a bad idea. I looked into the bottom of data on this, to make sure it wasn't just my opinion, and it's pretty split. There is no overwhelming evidence that a lot of small towns and universities have been rear and parking of any sorts. And the places I've found where business needs fair has worked are either places like that, I was worried they were going to be seen, where most of them are sin cars, and they're small and might have a little bit of a... I think I got about 20, being a larger truck driver than here is about...
30 seconds.
Or they have longer parking stalls so you get visibility before you come out. And finally, cars aren't as nice for this. We're all used to traditional rear pull-in parking, reverse lights, you see a lot more motion, empty angle vision for the driver, and if you are left by a large vehicle, you can see that you're traveling sooner from the traditional pull-in angle than you are pulling out headfirst. Just... Then you will... Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stram.
Those are all the people that are trying at the public comments regarding the parking, but I do have a number of emails that I received to read into my head. The first one is from William Murphy at 3 Seaport. Says, "Dear Mayor Dyes and House Members, as a year-round permanent resident of Cape Charles, I highly recommend and encourage Council to adopt all the recommendations contained in the Phase One Plan as developed by the Joint Committee. Thank you for your consideration." Barbara O'Hare from 11 Randolph Avenue. "I am in favor of the Phase One Parking Recommendations." Stephen McGowan. He did not give... 542 Monroe Avenue. "As a year-round resident of Cape Charles, I am very appreciative of the past and present efforts that the town administration has dealt with the difficult task of supporting our local businesses and vendors, our spring and summer tourism, and our resident citizens and property owners. I think we have made great progress during my time here over the past four years. I believe we will all be better served by the following changes to the Mason Avenue Parking Arrangement. One, replace reverse angle parking with front-end parking where reverse angle parking is currently located, and change the angle from a 60-degree angle to a 45-degree angle. Two, add parallel parking stops on the north side of Mason Avenue between Fig Street and Peach Street. Three, add parallel parking stops on the north side of Mason Avenue from Harbor Street to Bay Avenue. Four, add one handicap parking space each in the zero block and 100 block of Mason Avenue. I strongly believe this will be safer and easier for everyone. Thank you for your consideration." From David Kegler, broker for Blue Heron Realty. "Thank you for the opportunity to comment on reverse angle parking. As a supervising broker for Blue Heron Realty Cape Charles office at 113 Mason Avenue, I constantly watch from my desk drivers negotiating the reverse angle parking. Certainly, there is some extra effort required operating a vehicle in reverse, but the drivers are getting pretty good at it, both with rear cameras and warning signals on today's cars. Bestly managed reverse angle parking is an added safety factor. When passengers, especially children, open the car door to exit the vehicle, the door acts as a control preventer to them stepping out into traffic. If one life is saved due to that feature, then it is worth having reverse angle parking. Also, the many pickup trucks which are parked here have far less obstruction of oncoming traffic because the extended pickup bed is overhanging the sidewalk and not sticking out into the roadway. For these reasons, I am in favor of keeping the reverse angle parking as it is. I would appreciate this comment being written to the record." Kathleen Coulter. "The proposed initiatives look great and are very much needed. I am wondering if Strawberry Street is planned for a different time. If not, since it is in the future, it might need to be considered. Parking is at a premium on Strawberry Street, and not all of it is for commercial needs. The old-fashioned building has nine condominiums with no designated parking and handicap parking is non-existent on the street. I was recently in Vera Beach, Florida, where temporary parking signs were placed for certain times of the day. It just could be a solution during the busy summer months." John Barrett. "We own a unit at 300 Mason Avenue and have an unobstructed view of traffic on Mason. The existing back-end angle parking is ridiculous, especially at busy times. A vehicle goes past a spot, backs up, causes any following vehicles to back up, and generally interferes with the flow of traffic. My wife and I support all elements of the improved new parking plan and urge its approval at the meeting." Meredith Lusk. Owner of Moonrise Jewelry. "My name is Meredith Lusk, and I am the owner of Moonrise Jewelry, Inc., located at 245 Mason Avenue. As a retail store owner in Cape Charles for the past seven years, I am pleased to see steady growth in the number of visitors and locals patronizing our town's businesses, and I'm optimistic that those numbers will continue to grow in the future. This will certainly bring in additional tax revenue for our town, so the time is now to create both a short-term and long-term parking strategy with adequate funding to maintain the essential infrastructure. With the ongoing revitalization of the downtown business community, there's an urgent need to increase our parking capacity to accommodate not only visitors, but all of the local residents and employees who drive to Cape Charles to support our town's businesses. I believe the Phase One Parking Proposal before you tonight is an excellent first step in addressing these needs, and I respectfully urge you to approve all four initiatives on the table so the VDOT application process can commence as soon as possible. Thank you very much for considering my comments and for your continued service to our community." The last one is from Debbie Suddick. Says, "Please consider my thoughts when making a decision regarding changing this type of parking in Cape Charles. Reverse angle parking does nothing to promote a pedestrian-friendly shopping experience in town. I have watched drivers take considerable amounts of time trying to properly park their vehicles by reversing into the parking spot. Let's face it, not everyone is great at backing an automobile, myself included. During the event of trying to park vehicles at a reverse angle, exhaust is sticking up the air for anyone walking by. I have also smelled exhaust inside the shops. There is no point in having a vehicle exhaust pointed at pedestrians and storefronts. The Main Street volunteers are spending a lot of their time trying to improve the town, and I pray that Town Council will reconsider this type of parking. The same space-saving parking can be accomplished by pulling forward into a parking space, and from my conversations with neighbors, a majority feel that the..." and from my conversations with neighbors, the majority feel that the reverse angle parking is not practical, safe, and efficient."
Okay. Thank you for having the input and thank all the parties and people who showed up to all the floor access stuff, previous to the public hearing. Now, recognition of visitors, presentations, and recognitions. Mr. Shore, Virginia authority and authority of...
Deputy Mayor, Council staff. Matt Earl, General Operations Manager for the Eastport Public Road Authority.
Can we hold the mic up if we can hear better?
All right. How about now? I'm not sure when the last update was to the council. I'm sure it's been a number of years at least, but we kind of wanted to come down and discuss what we've been up to and give a little more information about what we do in general and what we've been doing in town. All right, let's see. Okay.
Can you pull that mic up?
How about that? Does it play better?
Can you hear?
Not good?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
All right. In the last century, we had a technology explosion. Personal computers that were created, miniaturized, cell phones, the internet, which is some of the many examples of technology that have been transported to the landscape of America. The goal for the new century is to see the benchmark for technology explode. Moore's Law, which originated around 1970, states that computer processing power will double every two years. We've continued to see this law will true increase processing and broadband as made newer services of technology. It was only 20 years ago that Netflix was invented, and now it's a household name with a huge adoption around the world. Streaming video, high finance, visual learning, telemedicine, research, and gaming are all technologies and sectors that have exploded due to the availability of broadband. In 2010, 4G LTE wireless was released by Sprint in the United States. Nine years later, if you travel more than a few miles off of Route 13, you barely get coverage, never mind 4G data rates. We see a tremendously slow adoption and limited availability of technology on the Eastern Shore because these technologies take time, money, and a drive to deploy. Private industry focuses on where they can get the best return on investment, but it's typically not rural America. In the mid-2000s, interested parties on the Eastern Shore, in conjunction with counties and planning district, came together to address the digital divide that exists between urban suburban areas in Virginia and the Eastern Shore. They realized the gap was increasing when it came to broadband and wanted to remedy the problem. April 2008, Acu Mac Northampton County's Board of Supervisors came together and formed the Eastern Shore Virginia Broadband Authority under Virginia's Wireless Services and Authorities Act. The formation created a public body politic and program that had the mission of getting broadband to all on the Eastern Shore. Our funding created an open access network that made communication services available to everyone that wanted to subscribe. Our founding documents state that our purpose to provide high-speed data service and internet access to local businesses, local government, and the public. We started construction of our network with funding from grants from the two counties, Acu Mac Northampton, the EDA, DH2B, as well as grants originating from NASA to improve their connectivity options for walls. We grew our customer base to sell to many end users as well as to other providers who leverage our network to expand their footprint, and in a few cases, to form entities that deploy broadband itself. So we've got the breakdown of what we got from Acu Mac Northampton County. This is just the startup funding in 2008, backbone and all the grants associated with Excluding the initial seed money in the form of grants we received, Eastern Shore Virginia Broadband Authority is completely funded by revenues it receives from subscribers. ESVBA even paid the seed money provided by the two counties back in an effort to give the community and see the counties continue to fund forward-looking projects. Our board consists of a diverse group of local interests. As mandated, we have both county administrators, which are Mike Mason and Charles Polakowski. Elaine Neal, our chairman, is the executive director of the ANP C. Scott Webb, our vice chairman, is the deputy director in chief of IT and communications at NASA Waltz Flight Facility. And Keith Layler is a retired local businessman and engineer. Since our first customers were turned up, we have continued, we have had continued public urging to provide more and more services, to build up more of the shore, and to offer additional services to remedy the broadband gap. Currently have more than 320 miles of carrier-grade fiber network, including an 85-mile backbone from Virginia Beach to the Maryland border. We have more than 10 years of stable operation under our belt, providing education, commercial, government, healthcare, wholesale, and more recently, residential customers. As I mentioned already, our founding repayment of the county's investment in a startup. In addition, in September of 2016, the ESVBA board directors decided through starting to sell residential services to the people of Harvard. This initial area welcomed the services we provided and have been incredibly well-received. Broadband Authority expanded its offerings to the New Church area of Northampton County, as well as the Potteague and Keller areas in Acu Mac County, and continue to have mutually positive feedback. July of 2017, ESVBA held town meetings in both counties to review our strategic plan about how to get broadband for numerous residents who continue to suffer with little or no options. There was resounding demand for fiber and home service that residents wanted in both counties. Due to strong feedback and review of the finances, ESVBA has continued to open its existing network to residents and continue to have strong support for these services. Many subscribers come to us due to lack of adequate options, services that are mediocre, service issues that continue to present as trees grow or trucks drive through the path from wireless hubs to customers, or simple requirements of bandwidth and latency that cannot be met for other technologies. With a huge amount of bandwidth growth, many technologies will hit a wall and require continued full technology refreshes every few years. This means that stock act technologies that will work today, but within a few years become obsolete and require rebuilds. This is not a good use of funding. We continue to allow people to shore to fall behind if we stand behind these solutions as the only investment. Fiber optics deployed using a number of technologies vastly improves the abilities of people who retain bandwidth increases at the market demand as technologies mature. Additionally, the fiber that ESVBA is deploying will last for decades and ensure the share is not at a broadband wall that requires retrofit. I've in fact got an email this morning about new technology that allows carriers to use... they can push 800 megabits per second over a single wave on fiber optic cable. So nearing a terabit of speed on a single fiber. It continues every month, every year, the technology increases to get more and more speed over a single fiber. It doesn't seem to be getting, hitting the end of life anywhere near, in the near future. Our network consists of a backbone stretches from meet points with multiple providers in tidewater to the Maryland border. Our community networks or the fiber networks that reach east and west from the backbone provide services to customers on the Eastern Shore of Virginia. Our initial lateral networks extended to the towns east and west of the backbone. Each year will last four or five. The ESVBA has budgeted further expansion from earned revenue to continue reaching further and further off the railroad and Route 13 corridor to the areas that have little or no broadband options. In October of 2018, the ESVBA obtained a $5 million bank bond to help build several hundred more miles of network in an effort of continued expansion and availability. We will increase the number of homes that have access to broadband on the shore from 25% to 65%. We will not stop moving forward till every person on the shore has the ability to have access to high-speed broadband services. Part of the bond will provide funding to you to build fiber on all inhabited streets of the incorporated towns of North Hampton and Acu Mac Counties. This year, we have budgeted to build an additional 210 miles of fiber, which includes the town buildings and extension on some of the necks that are difficult and costly to reach. ESVBA has a number of diverse wholesale partnerships that provide services in the public sector, commercial, and to residential customers. We also have smaller partners and expand our vehicles shores, including staff and council members of our great towns and counties, local media, traditional media, and social media, organizations, and active citizens who understand the need for improved data services all over the Eastern Shore of Virginia. What we've learned. We've learned that partnership works. We continue to believe that working together with all interested parties helps to increase the speed of broadband expansion. Over the years, we've provided incentives to local providers to set up service in incorporated towns, which includes a year of free service. We have pricing incentives to target local wireless providers through our WISP program to provide very low-cost transport services so providers can invest more capital in infrastructure and not break the bank with monthly fees. We hire competent people. We look for the best technology professionals on the shore and seek to intentionally create an environment on the shore for young people that have more opportunities in the technology field. We encourage competition. ESVBA always seeks to encourage an environment where the citizens and businesses of the Eastern Shore have the most quality options possible. Municipal broadband authorities can be successful. The ESVBA is financially strong, continues to be healthy despite being a family wireless authority in the Commonwealth that operates in the black without taking public money to keep operations going. And multiple models are required to achieve success. From a policy perspective, the key is not to limit anyone's ability, innovate, and find solutions at the local level. That's an update of what we've been doing, specifically about the town of Cape Charles. We've got some maps. This is, this is our existing fiber. The CSVBA owns Cape Charles right now. We come in from the Sheridan area where our communication site is, down Cape Charles Road, as well as the river, and with the addition of a few commercial areas on the south side of the town. We've got kind of a box cut in half that goes down Big Street to Madison, comes back Pine, and goes all the way down Mason Avenue, as well as a leg down Home Street. And I think that is Randolph, and then it cuts through the alleyway behind Randolph. So this is our existing fiber. We also have new this month, there's a free Wi-Fi hotspot. We've got 14 now, I think, Wi-Fi hotspots up and down the shore that residents can come and sit at parks and public areas and utilize free Wi-Fi on our network.
We also have five from Jefferson, one in Don Jefferson.
Yeah, here's the, are in progress. So as of the end of this month, we'll have fiber. I know it's hard to see probably in the back, but we'll have additionally, additional fiber legs that run down Washington as far as the electric poles run all the way down Jefferson. There's a connection between, there's a plumbing fig on Tazwell, as well as the same thing on Mason, not Randolph, sorry, on Randolph. So that'll be by the end of the month. As we add customers in town, we're adding some of the extensions. Now, we'll have a budget this year. I mentioned our $5 million bank bond. We will have all the towns on the shore that are incorporated built out, probably by, it's gonna be about 18 months, I think, to ramp up with everything. I don't remember where Cape Charles is in the list, but as we see this customer sign up, it won't be long.
Do you mean by built out?
We will have...
More than what's there?
Yeah.
The last line on his address.
The last one. This, this is current, and all of these legs will be done by the end of the month.
End of the month, okay.
To fill contracts, existing hotspots to set up. And then this will be when our build out of the town is completed sometime this year. So virtually every house in the normal part of town, it doesn't include the private neighborhoods, will have access to this fiber.
Where are the hotspots in Cape Charles?
Right now, it's just at the museum, at the Cape Charles Museum. We had discussed a while ago, asked the director about having one as a park.
Right.
If you can pick that up again. So that is...
The spur that went around the harbor slide?
It goes all the way, I think it goes almost to the chain.
The Joshua.
As well as all the way down the beach. Anybody come back, anybody come back to it? That was built, all of this was put in initially in the 2010 timeframe. And when they looked at engineering it, they looked at what the possible commercial customers might be. Obviously, the harbor is one. There's a leg that goes on Tazwell, on that spur to the east, which I assumed somebody thought was in case complete land.
How difficult is it to tap into it?
Um, not, it's not difficult at all.
It's tricky, commercialization.
And then what would be the plans for going to Bay Creek and over to Marina, seems that's where Cape Charles is left?
The private neighborhoods we don't have easements or access to, that would have to be something worked out with the Bay Creek. And they have their own communications networks. I would expect that would be...
Anybody have any more questions? Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you back at the end of the year.
So next, the planning commission gentleman, Bill Sack. What is he saying?
What am I presenting?
Your list of activities, gentlemen, for this year?
What's the postponent for next week, next month?
That would be great.
Since that's the first... Okay, that's time for public comments. I think there's about three minutes.
All ready? We have... Hey, Mayor?
Would it be all right if my wife and I switched places? She'd check it too.
My name is Sandy Mayer. I'm the secretary chair of Eastern Shore State Ordinance. We're responding to more requests by Mayor Deese to explain who we are and what community services we provide. We are a final watch receiver formed in 2013. Our mission is to provide low-cost state leader services for the Eastern Shore and reduce, and to help reduce the local cat population. The truth is, we live in a harbor town. Harbor towns typically have cats. We also have rats, destructive raccoons, snakes, and hawks and squirrels. Cats act as a natural deterrent, who squirrels local cats and... Cats act as a natural deterrent, who squirrels, local cats and pet cats alike. We work with the TNR method, which is trap, neuter and release to help and reduce the cat population. We also work with the sheriff's office and with the animal control to help accomplish this. It's a natural method. It's the only proven method that actually really reduces cat populations. Trap, neuter, release, and each cat has its own baby shot, they are identified with an ear tip. Eventually, the cats die out because there's no reproduction, there's no more kittens, and no, nothing to replace them, so there's a natural reduction of animals. Comments and reports tell me that there are a lot less cats in Cape Charles than there were five years ago, and there's a lot more squirrels. Anyway, we have a clinic coming up on March 4th in Sheridan. We expect to splatter the 30 animals. We work only with grants, donations and matching funds that we receive from certain different organizations. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hank Mayer. I live in Butler's Lot with Sandy. We first moved here to Cape Charles as our home on Bay Avenue in 2011, opened a breakfast. We brought about five cats with us, four of which were former community cats and one of which was our side of these, which is, yeah, we actually, we're not bought. We realized very quickly that there were a lot of cats in town. We got together with a group of friends in 2013, we formed a nonprofit, Eastern Shore Spay Organization, and set up to do trap, neuter, release and to really focus on spay neuter. We made an arrangement with, with PETA over in Norfolk to bring a surgical van over here once a month with a surgeon to do about 20 to 30 cats, dogs. We thought that the, that the problem was entirely community cats. It's not. This is, is an older community. There are a lot of people with cats that they feed, they take care of, but the families don't have money to pay for a veterinarian to have them spayed or neutered. Over the course of the last four years, we have, with the help of PETA, we've spayed and neutered 1,100 cats. We've raised $32,000 from, partly from the town, from town of Exmoor with matching funds from Two Wards Foundation, another foundation in California, with private donations. We've paid those funds and units to, to pay for the neutering and the spay neutering and giving shots to 520 community cats, which works out to roughly about another 580 cats who are pets. So we've, we've actually spayed, neutered more pets in the communities than what we consider to be spay, the community cats. And I think one, it's one part of the confusion is people see cats walking down the streets. It's really hard to tell whether that's someone's pet or it's, it's a community cat. You can tell whether it's spayed or neutered as a community cat.
Where is that at?
That's what I wanted to say. I mean, one of the big things that I think is being accomplished along with spay neuter is the fact that they're all getting baby shots. They're all being tested before that they don't have disease and if they do have disease that they're put down. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Hello, ladies and council members and staff. I'm Joy Volteir. I'm from Tazwell Avenue, and I'm here to kind of further talk about these community cats and the fact that we check on these cats every single day. The reason that we check on these cats every day, we've got several different colonies that we check on. We've got several reasons. Like Hank said, like Sandy said, our goal is to minimize the number of community cats in town. We check on the cats to see who might be sick. If a cat is sick, we take appropriate action. We either go to Dr. Higgins or sometimes the cat is put down. We've had several over the past few years that were actually put down for one reason or another, mostly due to disease. We also, because the community cats, the ones that we spay and neuter, have the ear tip, we check to see who has an ear tip and who doesn't, so that we know whether or not we need to address that by now if it's a pet, whether or not we can help these people when the van comes and help them with the cost of the spay and neuter. One cat goes into heat like three times a year. The average litter size is six kittens. Yikes, that's a lot of kittens without a spay and neuter. That's another reason that we check on these community cats, to find the kittens in the area and then we foster them out. Right now, I've got some at my house that we're socializing. Two of them are going to PetSmart tomorrow. We have a, an arrangement with PetSmart over in Chesapeake that they will take our socialized cats and adopt them out for us. We just had two adopted this past week. I'm taking two more over tomorrow, actually. We also provide shelter for these cats. Now, we don't have shelters anyplace that we haven't had permission to put these shelters. We always ask for permission. And the shelters are there to keep the cats out of the sheds, to keep cats out from any people's homes. It helps provide in like the wintertime, when it's cold outside, it helps provide them a place to stay and stay healthy. So, that's, okay. Well, I'm gonna stop there because I can join in on that.
Good evening, all. I'm not here to talk about cats, but I'm here to talk about something I thought I never would be talking about, and that is dog poop. I think it's ridiculous. I'm not knocking the door, I love dogs, but my problem are those persons who walk in the doors. When they leave their homes, they'll walk their dogs so the poop is not in their yard. They walk those dogs that end up with the poop in others' yards. The first time I was gonna come down here and miss the meeting and I was gonna talk about it, the next week I went out and almost stepped in. Now, you know how that would feel. Now, if you walk around town, you see those blue bags that can be used. And if you don't have blue bags, you go to the grocery store, you have those bags to just buy something. But I think it's ridiculous that somebody has to have a problem, and look, mine are these dogs, you take care of them, but don't let them do that mess if somebody else's yours, but you want that to happen to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Joanne, is it Fallon?
Ah, that's close. Sorry.
Good evening, everyone. If it wasn't obvious, yes, I come here. How lucky am I after coming to Cape Charles for seven years and falling in love with it to actually be able to buy a piece of property and build a home out of a crowded street? But I understand part of my frustration, disappointment, one day to wake up, a couple yards from my house, one of these feral cat habitats are set up. Imagine you waking up and next to your business, next to your home, couple yards away, 20 to 30 cats being called every day to pee, et cetera. One thing about cats, they don't stay in one place. They come and eat, they go somewhere else, they go under sheds, crawl spaces and boats. So there's a definite impact on the properties around them. So a little frustrated. I know that this is a sensitive issue. I know I applaud any animal welfare group for the work they do, it's not an easy job. I'm an animal lover, I have rescued dogs, so it's not about not loving animals, responsible pet owner. Well, I thank the mayor for bringing this discussion and opening the door to that. It seems like Cape Charles is having a great boom with investors and investments and new businesses, new people, more come here, whether you want that or not. And in that process, every other week, there's a sold sign on a piece of property. There's a new house going up. And it appears that where vacant lots or housing some of these habitats for the feral cats, those cats are being displaced. Personally, I don't belong, think they belong in a historic residential area. And the only thing I'm really asking at this time is that the council consider possibly forming a committee and taking a deeper dive into all the issues on both sides and maybe hopefully come to more of a long-term solution. I was told that a few years ago, somebody was willing to donate some land outside of the town where the cats could- Three seconds. Okay, thank you. Where the cats could be safer. Maybe that's the answer, but I would encourage at this time or ask the town council at least open the door to further honest communication and discussion about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Another question.
Yes.
Everybody up here should come here.
Okay. Well, I know much better. Well, perhaps the answer is getting them out of these residential areas. You know, Cape Charles is charming, we all fell in love with it, that's why we're here and hopefully that's why we're gonna stay. So looking at a solution to get them outside of the city, of the town. They don't belong running where, you know, the ordinance right now say animals cannot roam through, okay? One of the solutions is animal control comes, they trap them and possibly euthanize them. We don't want that, that's not what we're asking for. If you were on Facebook today, you would have thought there was gonna be a roundup at midnight and a mass execution, but that's not what happened. But is there a better solution? The challenge would be for all cats to come together and find that better solution, not just for the residents, not just for the tours, you know, that are, next to these would be our BOs that are next to a cat call. That's not fair, that's not what I would consider a good first impression. So the challenge would be, what is that next best solution? Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Hi, my name is Lori Smith. I'm on Strawberry Street and to keep me in the free minutes, I'm gonna read the email, but I'm just gonna say a few things. I recently relocated to Cape Charles on a full-time basis after building a home on Strawberry Street, and I learned that the feral cat situation has been discussed in the past with the decision being made to allow them to be maintained instead of in the town. At this point, I don't believe that maintaining these houses in this part, or any part of this charming town, to be the best and safest solution any longer. New homes and businesses have been built since then, so now may be the time to raise this sensitive subject matter. As we said, there's not as many lots available and I really don't want the cats to continue to be displaced because there are just not as many places for them to go. I love cats, I've had one my entire life, and she lives indoors, and I have dogs that are always on her, behind their fenced yard. However, when I take them outside, I always have to be careful that there's no cats in the yard because I don't want anyone attacked, my dogs or their cat. I also have to make sure there's no feces in the yard. I know that's extremely dangerous to ingest that, and so I think if something were to happen to any of our cats or anyone else's, who's responsible for this? Those that are providing the feeding areas, those that are feeding the cats. I know that cats have destroyed my neighbor's boat who lives behind me and his boat cover inside his boat as well. I think, I know cats are going into the crawl spaces of nearby homes, including my next door neighbor, causing damage there as well. The empty food bowls and plates are certainly going to attract other animals. All of this, in my opinion, is a danger, it's a nuisance and it's damaging, and these cats are not really in anyone's control, they're not pets. And I know there's no easy solution to this. I think it's a growing cat population in town and I respect that, you know, cats are being neutered and spayed, but I do think that's a drop-off area as well. So other cats are being dropped off that aren't spayed or neutered and it's causing kittens, litters of kittens still. But I believe steps need to be taken to begin rehousing them outside of the town for a variety of reasons. I want to keep the cats safer in less populated areas, to keep all the domestic pets safe, to maintain our property values and attract tourists to the rental properties. Rental owners have already received complaints from their renters about the smell and noise-
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. -next to their properties. I don't believe any of us that love Cape Charles want this for our town, so I'd like to figure out a way for all of us to come together and to see where we can place these cats to keep everyone safer. Thanks for your time and consideration.
You've got an email, did you get that?
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Patrick Hannah?
I'm drawing, I'm not sure the best place to draw it out. I need to come in here and put it in the board or something or not. I'm not able to talk with them. Is it possible if I put, I'm just trying my three minutes out for it to-
I am, I'm ready. I am.
Give it a chance to get the light.
It'd be hard to show it to somebody.
Is someone having it formulated?
Yeah.
So I'm here, I'm here weighing in for the rail road.
I've, I've, I've met with board members of the railroad and understand- I'm, I'm, I'm understanding from them that they want very much to have the town's input on what's gonna happen to the rail yard. They also made it very clear that they're not gonna give it away. They want, they want the proper value for that. And I know there's, there's various plans, you've probably seen more than one. I think there's a couple of things consistent with plans, but for me, the emphasis is on financial feasibility, in real terms, and that the property isn't done all at once in some contrived fashion by a developer, that there could be, a way that the property could be controlled privately and/or publicly and then let it evolve, let it grow organically and carefully with great thought and architectural review. There are only three minutes, I'm not gonna lie, I'm glad we're happy to come back. Yeah, I can handle this. Thanks, man. So, if you can see this, that's Peach Street, Mason Avenue. And I think most people have been in agreement that Peach Street makes very good vehicular access. I'm thinking there should be a very urban feel within the development, not like Bay Creek or not suburban, not half-acre lots, okay? What I have experience is, what I pretend to know, I don't know everything, but what I know more than most people is demand for commercial and residential property right here, okay? I've also run a little boutique hotel for a few years and had a lot of feedback from tourists on why they come here. And we're recently in selling, selling properties and working with commercial tenants, I know why they're here and, 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 there is some commercial demand, it's limited, it will come in time slowly. There's immediate residential demand, okay? Town lots, as I understand it, have jumped, sometimes even doubled in the last year or so. so. After the 2007, it took a long time, and the slots just outside of town, amazingly, still not coming up in value, but town lots have. My thought is, see this, can you make out the harbor? Everybody's pretty familiar with this, I think. But if there was residential overlooking the harbor, and beautiful view out the mouth of the harbor, and more residential on Mason Avenue, that immediately pays for days, and the rest can come slowly and carefully. But I can leave this, happy to leave this, because it's going to pass around. Please call, happy to leave this, we will be there, we will care, happy to come back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm just going to...
Give that back. I'll be down later.
Thank you.
I'll describe this.
Hello, ma'am.
Maybe, how are you?
Gina Buzek. It has come to my attention and complains about the feral cat population resurfaced again. Since I have held my love of harvest since 1997, I have seen many of these battles fought over the years. On myself, I've written a sound with concerns about this situation. Joining next morning will help you to the cattle well, and I will take Pete's house from my front porch. I am aware of the great lengths they have gone to with support of the town to ensure that cats are spayed and neutered and have their shots. I applaud these efforts. However, since I am not a full-time resident, cats use my backyard and back deck as their personal litter box. In addition, the food population got so bad last summer, I could not even come down for several weeks because of the toxic chemicals my exterminator had to use. I can no longer bait my dogs down with me because of the cat feces in my yard. This is really the image the town wants. Now, I hear y'all are relocating one of the colonies even closer to my house, Pete's backyard. How is this fair to those of us that live close to him? It's embarrassing to sit on my front porch with friends and have them comment on the cat yard smell. I paid my taxes, spent tens of thousands of dollars improving the looks of my home, know I'm on, follow all rules and regulations of the town. What recourse do I have to prevent even more cat houses from being placed in Pete's backyard? Currently, the houses are in his very back corner, closest to the park in Park Road. Even he doesn't want the cats closer to his house. Why isn't he made to put them out of sight? They certainly are an eyesore looking from the park. I certainly don't have the answer to this huge problem, but allowing residents to feed these colonies in their backyards certainly isn't in the best interest of all the residents. My question is this: if Pete feeds these cats, and then they come onto my property and destroy patio furniture, screen doors, et cetera, is Pete responsible for the damages that is done? Or when, not if, my dogs get sick from the cat feces in my yard, is he going to pay the vet bill? I have had lengthy discussions with my vet about negative effects eating cat feces on dogs and how sick it makes them. It's only a matter of time someone gets sued. The town allowing such activities opens it up to being held partially responsible. There is a lot of land on the outskirts of town. Relocate these cats there. It will take time and great effort, but it can be done. Do not allow individual residents to invite these colonies into their yards at the expense of the neighborhood. It is a great nuisance. And she's at Three Park Road. I'm Ryan Patton at 522 Strawberry. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Ryan Patton, and I am the new president of Cape Charles. I purchased a home on Strawberry Street in the summer of 2018. I am writing this letter to bring your attention to the matter of the stray cat population within Cape Charles and the current shelter location that was set up towards the beginning of this year. Towards the end of last year, I was approached by a woman who was an advocate for the stray cats of Cape Charles. She advised me that she was in the process of relocating the cat shelter and would have to do it in phases to avoid confusing the cats. She came to my home and spoke with me about the situation, alerting me that the cat shelter would be placed on the church's property for a few weeks before being moved again. She asked if that would be a problem, and given the way she presented the situation, I did not have any issue with having the shelter temporarily located near our home. While myself and my family are all animal advocates and believers in animal rights and the necessities of food, water, and shelter, the current location of the cat shelter has overwhelmed my property, including the yard, porch, and even under the home with cats. This is especially concerning for me, as I have three young children that have severe cat allergies. Cat allergies are twice as common than dog allergies. The two of my sons, ages six, five, and three, were diagnosed with allergies shortly after their birth. Contrary to common beliefs, it's not the cat's fur or hair that causes the allergic reaction. People with cat allergies are allergic to proteins in the cat saliva, urine, and dander, dried flakes of skin. While occasionally stray cat in our yard, or even on the porch, does not create an issue, the current population and sheer volume of cats and the cats' proximity to our home, and presence of saliva, urine, and dander, has caused my children's allergies to flare up and prevent them from being able to spend time in the home. Given the shelter location has taken up more of a permanent residency at the church on Strawberry Street, I am sending this to you to address my concern and at least consider the health and well-being of my family. I am requesting that you please reevaluate the decision to allow the cat shelter to have a permanent location within the city limits of Cape Charles, and look for an alternate location to serve as the home for the stray cats. I ask that this matter be given immediate attention as the warmer spring weather is approaching, and the allergens will become more of an increasing burden. Your responsiveness to the residents of Cape Charles' concerns gives me confidence that you will give the necessary attention to my concern. Thank you for your prompt attention. Janet Dudley, 303 Madison Avenue. I am sure all of you are aware that the cats that run amok in Cape Charles have finally gotten the residents up in arms. Many have complained that we have to run them off our property, out of our furniture, off of our cars, and under them, not to mention the things that they have, that they leave behind. Poop and fleas. In one spot, all of the 20 cats are being fed, and then they scamper to their respective hideouts or place of rest until the next feeding, which happens every day. I have suggested to cover our traps, but the people who feed say they can't do that. I can say at least they are not co-creating anymore. I believe most have been spayed, but there is still the problem of them invading our property, and most of us have dogs who go ballistic when they come around. Cats also carry a multitude of diseases, cat scratch fever being one that I know about. Also, as for fleas, our neighbor has had to have her house exterminated due to cats nesting under her house and infecting it with them. We would appreciate any help that you can give us in relation to this problem, which seems to get worse instead of better. The person who feeds them says she has six different places that she feeds them, or one block being only one site. We have to keep our dogs on a leash and have to pick up their poop and do so willingly. The cats seem to be either forgotten or have a role of the ruse, so to speak. And if you're time and any suggestions as to how this problem could be resolved. Michael and Jean Hollister, Seven Park Road. We own the house in Cape Charles on the park for 11 years. When we were first here, we knew of the feral cat problem, that heard the cats were getting stated, and eventually, they would all die off. It appears, though, that there are more feral cats around now than there were 11 years ago. Maybe feeding the cats in the empty lots behind our house makes it seem like there are more cats? Maybe people are just dropping unwanted cats off in Cape Charles? We have experienced a few problems with these cats. In the summer, we have various water mountains in our yard, birds like to bathe in them. The cats hide behind our bushes and kill the birds. We in our yard, they leave their feces on our lawn and garden. We feel this is a health issue, especially if you have children laying in the yard. Also, we cannot keep cushions on our furniture on our front porch when we're not there, because the cats sleep on them and make them disgusting and dirty. Although we are not fond of the cats, we wouldn't want to euthanize them, but there should be a way to keep their population from growing and hopefully die out naturally. The cats should not be allowed to roam the neighborhood. Maybe they could be moved to a more remote part of Cape Charles. Ashley Savo. My name is Ashley Savo, and I'm the property owner of 404 Jefferson Avenue in Cape Charles. I am writing to express my concern of the large feral cat population in Cape Charles, as well as the many food plots, and specifically the one located directly behind my fence line. The food plot was located to this area about one month after we closed on this vacation investment home. After observing the feeding procedures, the food plot, and the cats, I felt it necessary to speak to the town manager and one of the cat supporters to fully understand the efforts being made for this feral cat population. After these conversations and a better understanding of these feral cats, I feel interested to express my concerns to the town of Cape Charles City officials. My concerns are the following. One, who is cleaning the food plots? Is the pet feces picked up daily, as expected with dogs? The two most common illnesses caused by cat feces are... Don't come to bacterial infection, commonly known as E. coli, and toxoplasmosis, those very harmful to humans and health concern. Two, I understand the cats are being vaccinated once annually. However, what are they being vaccinated for? Are they being treated for fleas, mange, ringworm? Several of the cats I noted upon observation did not look healthy. I have been informed that fleas are a real problem in the neighboring yards of these food plots. A case of fleas in my home could be detrimental to this vacation rental. The expense alone to treat the fleas in the home, as well as for our customers, would be significant. In addition, our customers can post reviews available to all interested in our property, and these reviews remain on VRBO listing and are not able to be removed unless proven untrue. We have previously owned a vacation home in Cape Charles and owned two other properties in Surfside Beach, South Carolina. Our reviews are very important to us, and we have always maintained positive feedback in reviews. I am concerned this food plot and these feral cats will likely lead to negative feedback in customer reviews. My first customer actually referenced these cats in regard to her dog's attempts at getting out of our fence line, but luckily, didn't post this for all to view. Three, our property caters to families and pet owners. Our customers with young children will likely be concerned, as I would be as a parent. Feral cats carry disease as listed above, and may possibly bite or scratch a young child who is not familiar with this type of cat population. If this child is allergic, it will become a medical emergency and/or lead to infection and/or cat scratch fever. In addition, all owners will not likely have a relaxing vacation as their dogs bark endlessly at the cats like mine did, as well as harboring concerns of possible diseases or parasites their dogs may get due to these feral cats. Four, the cats linger on our front porch and are removing disposable food bowls from my front lawn. The cats are fed to food plot and around the area. This encourages them to feel ownership of our property and mark their territory, especially when our customers bring pets. Five, cats are now beginning to crawl spaces to keep warm in the winter months. In this process, a... Is that mine? Okay. All righty, Linda Thinks. My name is Linda Thinks, and I'm in the 300th block of Jefferson. I have been here since 2010 and become increasingly concerned about the feral cats in my neighborhood. I have spoken to the individuals that feed behind our house and to the left-wing old store. I contacted the previous mayor about my concerns when last spring, a fox came every morning in the spring and hunted in the trees and shrub line beside our home. The feral cat feeding is definitely of good intention, but has become out of control and not seeing the decline in population. That was explained to me when it happened as the older cats died out. Instead, I see an increase in the numbers and an increase in their boldness to stand their ground. When I walked my puppy around the block, you would think the cats would hide or move across the street to avoid us, but not anymore. The cats stare us down and make me feel I have to cross the street to avoid them.
Stare. She likes to stare.
There are so many cats coming to the two feeding stations that are beside my backyard that I feel afraid to walk my dog in the evening. An additional concern is for my grandson, who has no fear of animals, especially cats, since we have had indoor cats in our home. I have tried to explain to him that some of the cats have shots and are safe, but others know and has knowledge of their history. Scratches and bites from these cats are an increasing concern for us. The cats try to live under our shed, in our huts, and under the home. When they find a spot of entry, they become aggressive, and that is where my family is put at risk. They hide in my azalea bushes at night, making it impossible to walk my dog safely. Cat scratch fever is a common reaction to run with a feral cat, as well as infections and scythe. Do all have shots? No, some do, but since this population is not in decline, the cats are being added to these colonies that are being abandoned in the area, so people know they will be dead. I'm not a cat caterer, but I do believe that eight feral cat colonies and feeding stations does not speak well of our community. As a realtor, I wonder if an ordinance to disclose the location of the colonies and feeding stations to potential home buyers would not be appropriate. We have a problem in this community that has not been addressed. The number of cat feeding stations so close to residential property, but also as full-time residents, is not good for the cats, for our residents, and visitors. If the town condemns the feeding of feral cats in residential areas, and it should be fully responsible for any and all incidents that are caused by the feral cats, by doing nothing to address the concerns of citizens and property owners in these residential areas, we do in fact condemn their presence. The old store that has become a cat colony and feeding station is located on one of our community trails. I cannot even walk my dog past that lot without being confronted by cats. The property is in terrible shape and should be condemned. I would not like to have been the new owners or adjacent homes. I realize this meeting tonight to discuss this and the important concerns of our citizens. I hope you'll share this with those who will be presiding over the meeting. I would like to have my concerns noted. I'll make an effort to attend, but my health is not wonderful, and evenings are not always great. Thanks for listening and trying to address my concerns. One more, from Zebra Vipassna, freestyle yoga and yoga therapy. I'm not able to attend a council meeting this evening, so I was hoping I could address the concern of the business on our street. The sidewalks along the street are in need of repair to avoid further accidents and injuries. This past summer, I personally had a client enter the studio who had tripped over the uneven concrete. Her elbow was bloody to the point she needed medical attention. She was in pain throughout the remainder of her vacation, was unable to attend yoga classes on a daily basis, as she had done in the three years prior. I personally chalked the sidewalks where they were most dangerous, and recently moved an orange hazard code to cover the hole outside the Wilson Building. I have heard that it is D-Doc that is responsible for the maintenance and safety of the streets and sidewalks. All my concerns best correct to the D-Doc. Sadly, my client joked that she should sue Cape Charles. Strawberry Street is such a lovely part of the Main Street community, and the business owners here are excited that the town is growing and thriving. Thank you all for your devotion to the residents and shop owners who love this wonderful kind town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have approved the comments of the city. Number one, the consent agenda, which consists of the approval of the agenda format, the minutes, approval of the December 31, 2013 financial report, monthly department report, Cape Charles Main Street, the definitive report. Sale of property at 33 Marina Drive, tax map. Oh, for a public, yeah. Sale of property at 33 Marina Drive, tax map, number 83A3-8-10, reschedule public here.
If council would be able to, I would like to amend the agenda for a short, close session of the city, paragraph three, I believe it is, regarding the disposition of property for the sale of property. If you'd be able to do that.
Is that after the business?
That would be at the conclusion of our meeting. That item, it would replace item 13. You want me to people to... I'm asking to modify. The motion was for the consent agenda, and I was pulling the approval of the agenda format out, in order to alter my position for the meeting's agenda.
The motion's approved. There are the motions approved. The consent agenda, everything except for the approval of the consent. Motion. The motion.
I have a comment on the public utilities report. Comment on the public utilities report. Something that I comment on quite frequently is the disparity between the total water production and the total wastewater production. It's my impression that wastewater... It's my impression that wastewater production should typically be less than water production. We routinely have a higher wastewater production than water. And the month in question in this report, which I assume is January, but I don't know, it could be December, the difference was 2.3 million gallons in a month. So, for me, it raises a few alarms. One is that it's obviously an INI issue, or predominantly an INI issue, I think, which we have addressed some things, like manholes and other things like that, some pumps, but there's obviously still a significant problem that could eventually result in some kind of a fine, or a, some type of issue of that nature. But also, this is a huge capacity. This 2.3 million gallons in a month is almost 30% of our wastewater plant capacity that could be used for new homes, new connections, new businesses. And it is routinely, not been this high typically, but it is typically at least a million gallons a month. So, we're wasting a quarter of our wastewater plant capacity. So, I just think that doesn't get the attention that needs, so I just wanted to bring it up.
This January edition.
And I know, before I was on council, Steve's been bringing this up forever. I'm just wondering what our action is on that. Well, we've identified what the problem is, so do you know the capital per foot? Or is it, is it INI? What is it? Do we know?
Well, I believe you're correct that it is part of the problem. There's been an extensive manhole relinement that went on probably about two years ago, which typically addresses INI issues. Obviously, we've got-
That's an I, I'm sorry, I don't know what an INI is.
Stormwater gets into the wastewater system.
I'm sure these are still not going to be INI.
I appreciate the opportunity, right? The recent smoke test that was done showed some- That is the smoke test of the sewer system, alright? What that showed was that there was some smoke that was generated out of one of the stormwater collections, this tech bases. Now, that shouldn't happen. Why that happened is something that still needs some investigation. Does that account for 2.3 million gallons? I don't know. I don't know that. It's going to be an extensive project, still both the stormwater system and the wastewater system we looked at. The stormwater system, again, I know people don't want to hear that, it's D-DOC. It's the D-DOC's right way. It's their property, it's our problem. We can work with D-DOC.
Sounds like it's coming in both in the that, sounds like you have a ground crack pipe and the stormwater is a lot of groundwater. But for that level.
That would be one of the expectations, either somewhere or multiple places.
Right.
Even with that smoke test, twenty years all been on, it's still, a lot of the houses will still have their sump pumps connected to the sewer system.
Well, they were inspected six, five, six years ago?
Probably four times, basically.
Would you just re-inspect?
People do, you know, nobody wants to spend $2,000 to extend their sump pump to the street. Not to the sewer system.
If that's the case, just complete the inspection.
I would be interested in the smoke test, so I didn't know if each home is inspected.
Yes, inspected. That jet did mine off and I had to cut mine off because I didn't know it was a leak at the time. That was five, six years ago.
That's amazing. I think one of those wildfires, fires, we're not operating.
I was going to say brown roads.
Yeah, brown roads.
Also, mention of a GHD proposed way forward in the interior of expanding the water with our plants. I'd like to see that.
If I may ask, it sounds like that there might be a combination of things that we don't know, whether it's employee filtration, whether it's actual stormwater pipe that's something that's creeped in, or who knows what else, or these sump pumps. What's our next step? That's all I wanted to ask. And we have a very next step that we will look at to try to analyze the problem. I don't remember. I remember the recent smoke test, but I don't know what we're going to talk about doing that.
You'll see in the capital project, the budget, some approach to look at the, do some television, pick the wrong place to say that's where.
And let me just frame it back to our strategic, right? This falls under public services and our delivery of services, which is town manager and staff. So that falls under that valley where, and they should be looking at it and coming back to council with the appropriate suggestions.
Was there exercise their budget last year to be in camp?
I don't know that.
Did I pressure them that they were going to run through the pipelines? There's 16,000 per month right there.
Yeah, I think they did.
If we could find out, say, if they didn't do that, or it's still about it, do they think we're supposed to exercise that? Because that should be the next tool they do is to know if it's a special area. They can run it, look. It is good idea if they see some.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Now you want my motion?
I do.
I'd like to amend the agenda format this evening to include a very short session under section 2.23711A Code of Virginia for paragraph three for discussion of, or acquisition or disposition of real property when that discussion in the public format might affect our bargaining strategy as a town. And that would specifically be related to railroad property. If you'd be willing to have that discussed.
Both?
Thank you.
Now, let it be noted that item 7A is now item 13. Item 13 is item 14. Brutal beach and dune management plan.
So, I'll just give a brief background. The draft beach and dune management plan was developed by the Wetland and Coastal Dune Board at the request of the town council. In June of 2016, the town of Cape Charles requested that the board make recommendations for beach, dune, and sand management to town council, which the board did in September 2016. Subsequently, the town asked the board to develop a sand and dune management plan, including providing an opportunity for residents' comments into the scale of the sands, water erosion problems, and potential practices to mitigate future wind erosion events. The Wetlands and Coastal Dune Board met on December 10th to discuss the final updates required for the plan prior to submitting to town council for review. A presentation was given to town council during the January 17 regular meeting by Ann Hayward Walker, who's a big person who puts a plan together. The meeting, the next week, town, the town's website, and that meeting. And the plan has been updated and is now ready for review and action.
Just like to say, a job they did on this is, I really appreciate it. And I would like for council to adopt this.
I'll make the motion that the beach and dune management plan is protected.
All in favor? Thank you all, thank you. Harbor fuel system.
Mr. Council? As you're aware, the grant from last year, the big grant that was applied for and approved through BIG, the water infrastructure grant funding. Then we had a catastrophic failure in one of our fuel lines. It's pretty much spelled out in the council, in the report. As everything ties in together with the fuel lines, the grant process, and the grant applied for, the proposal that we put forward to you all is what we feel is the best-case scenario to accomplish it all. It's very, very needed.
Stat recommendation is to authorize and order a contract. We're equipped with Sales &amp; Services Inc. and you might have 69,000 dollars in money. Sir? All in favor?
No, I have a question.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, the question has to do with this grant, $3,000. When it ties the entire project to be completed, does that mean fuel pumps, card readers, and storage tank?
Yes.
So, in effect, we're just moving ahead with the 69,000, assuming that we're not going to get this, perhaps until we're down the stream.
The grant process through BIG is through August of 2020. With the other projects that we had going on, we didn't think that it would be a lucrative process to ask through another grant funder, which is the Port Authority. They, because they funded this project at the beginning, the Port Authority that are with us, assisted.
So, all we're really asking is, in the future, will we be doing card readers and storage tank?
Yes.
And then we can-
With your approval.
Yeah, granted, yes, okay. That's what I wanted to make sure, that the 30,000 is held up for those three components.
Not, yes. And we will ask for additional funding through, we have to go through other means because the big money, the water infrastructure money, that's the most that they'll allow toward this project. Is like a, I think it's 29% is what they'll regulate.
Okay, I'm still confused. So, the water infrastructure grant allocated is 30,000. This recommendation is for 69,039. So, what we're asking was, the 30 won't count for the 67,000?
As of right now.
As of right now. But if I, after August of 2020?
Well, after, we agreed to the card reader for 35,000 and the storage tank ready for it.
So it doesn't involve, we just need to not think about that.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking.
Do we have 69,000 to pay for this? That's my question.
Was it in the budget for last year? This is a new budget, Terry Ryan?
We had 69,000 allocated in the budget, that was our match for this year. So even if we don't get the grant this year, we still have already appropriated the property to do this purchase. If we, if council does decide to do the card readers and the storage tank later, we'll get the 30,000 back, but we'll have to expand more. But as of now, the 69,000 are going to be appropriated, we won't lose any. But we were going to do a new set for a match before that was done. That would be our match. If we extend the entire amount and then get 30,000 back, that would be our match. So this year, because of the breakdown of this equipment, we won't be applying, we won't be extending the entire amount and only paying our match. We're usually, well, we would have had a match just- So we'll have to have a different match going for- A smaller match. Yes, okay. Thank you.
The card readers, are they just being used during normal business hours?
Yeah, well, we can set it up, it's to the town's approvals. We can set it up to where the street side, we can regulate that.
Good, I'd say we can regulate during business hours because that would have a catastrophe.
Yeah, and it's kind of, it's outside of the norm, the way we do it now. But still, the pumps are open 24 hours a day to our car holes. But-
They can pump the downer there.
Yeah, you got cameras. I mean, if there's a spill, a hose breaks, it literally drops down to a trickle an hour. I mean, you don't, you lose less than a gallon an hour. It's amazing how they recognize anything.
Yeah, there's all kinds of flow factors built into the system. And that's, on the catastrophic failure that we had, that's what, that's what brought it to our attention, was the pump stopped pumping. That's when we had to check it out.
The other thing is too, typically they sign up, I think when they sign up pretty few leaders and stuff, so labor didn't pretty much responsible for any of those spills. They must have seen the bus or something, don't hire it. Motion?
We have a motion.
Second? Are we finished with discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Both? Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Phase one parking recommendations.
Only 30,000 dollars.
So, these, I'm pretty sure everyone here is aware of what these are, but I'll just go through them again. So this is the phase one recommendation was for the, from the Parking and Health Committee, specifically Mason Avenue Parking. So, number one, the recommendations of the floor. Number one, replace reverse angle parking with front end parking where reverse angle parking is currently located. And change the angle from a 45-degree angle to a 60-degree angle, as was mentioned, but it's from a 60-degree angle to a 45-degree angle is what actually is going to be proposed. If that makes sense, in the staff report, it's going to be 45. So I'm just going to say it is from a 60-degree angle to a 45-degree angle. Number two, add parallel parking stripes on the north side of Mason Avenue from Peach Street and Peach Street. Three, add parallel parking stripes on the north side of Mason Avenue from Parker Street to Bay Avenue. And number four, add one mini cab parking space each on the 0 block and 100 block of Mason Avenue.
I'll figure this way along though. So, I have a question. If we make a motion to the board for this, to fund it, for this project, because we don't pay for it, or we don't pay for it, do we have to fund and pay for it? Does council want to fund and pay for it?
Well, I guess that's right, so. My question, that was one of my questions was, what is the cost? I haven't seen anything related to cost in anything that we've been providing.
I'm forward to apply it. I just, I don't know how to get that.
Well, I would think it's not going to be until the 2020 budget because of where we're at, timing lies in D-DOC. And Larry, he exactly said it would be at least a four-month process once it would be, to be done. So it would often, it would definitely be in the 2020 budget.
Typically, we have at least an estimate.
I know.
We don't typically approve a bike check.
Well, let me ask you this.
I didn't, I didn't take it to mean that because we approved of this plan that we're going to immediately do it, Steve. I was thinking this is kind of a policy change. You know, it's before then we determine what does it take to get it done. And since we're in the budget process, I was not sending that, and I've not had that discussion with anybody, but.
It should be done before tourist season.
If definitely possible to do.
Well, that is not going to happen this year.
That was the intention, but the timing, going through and doing it correctly, even going through all of the channels and getting everyone's input, you know, the process of the process, and that's the lump home attempt.
It's going to go out with terrible rollers being over the.
So, I start a motion, will be to have the seed authorized.
Well, I think, I think what's before us is, do we accept the recommendation that's been vetted through the public channels, been recommended by the planning commission to us for these four studies, for aspects of parking on Mason Avenue? That's all that's stated. It doesn't say when that will be done, it doesn't say how much it will cost, and those are very important considerations. But I think the first step is, would we want to do it afterwards, so?
So, I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendation.
I'll second.
All favor?
Still some discussion. And one thing is cost. And another thing is, I appreciate everyone that came out and made statements tonight. I personally don't care whether we park front and back in. A bit overwhelmed that if you can drive, you can't back into a parking spot, but that's neither here nor there. I thought.
I'm going to back out.
You're going, you know, whether you have a big truck next to you and you're backed in or you're pulled in front ways, you're still not going to be able to see when you're backing out. But, and I thought that Richard Leo had a good point that could be considered, that pickup trucks, which seem to be the biggest bane, maybe pickup truck parking is on the south side of Mason Avenue, and only cars and SUVs are on the north side of Mason Avenue. Don't know that. But another thing I'd like to see incorporated into this thought process is Strawberry Street Plaza currently has two parking spaces right in front of it. It's actually blocked out. I don't think there should be any parking behind the plaza either.
So, we've actually, that's in our phase two discussion.
Well, if they start strengthening, I don't want them to believe it.
No, we're looking at that potentially for some.
And another thing that could be done, I think, by Public Works, and I was, I'd asked a question before and was told that the gravel lot parking bumpers are laid out according to V-Dot standards, and they may well be. But with gravel, you can't paint stripes, and if you try to park back there next to somebody, you find that they seem very, very narrow. So, I think they ought to take a few of those bumpers out and stretch those spots out a little bit until that lot gets paved and can be properly striped, in order for it to be a little more friendly. And I would also recommend that someone come up with a cost for this.
Are you, are you amending your motion for that?
I didn't amend the motion, I'm just offering suggestions.
You would, I would say, yeah. Well, just one thing, though, the phase two things talk about the gravel lot. I agree, I mean, not as far as moving them, the blocks, that should be done immediately. If it doesn't need, the need, there's no reason to send that through committee and discussion, but phase two does talk about crosswalks, loading zones, that Strawberry Street Plaza front and back, so it's on the, on the dockets next.
I understand that, but when you go there and you, there's two cars parked there or two trucks parked there, you can't even see the plaza.
So, you can, well, that's the recommendation's from.
They could go down.
When the line is done, right? The hope is that by the time the line would actually get placed, phase two would.
I'm done.
Anybody else?
Richard, Mr. Leo also made a good comment about the height of the curb on the stuff, so I've never really thought about, and it's absolutely true.
Anybody that parks a car there thinks about.
Yeah, absolutely. It's been discussed a great deal in this group to how that can be addressed. Larry and Zach have been wonderful in coming up with some curb cut recommendations. All of those fit into that phase two, which are crosswalks and loading zones and those pieces that are immediately going to be, have already started to be worked on. This is just finalizing the process.
I think according to which is pickup trucks.
Well, there's a lot of discussion within this group about people not reading signs, and that's the biggest problem. I mean, you know, we were trying to fit involved parking in places and people reading signs for things and enjoying it, you know? If we were going to implement something like that, I think the person who talked about courtesy warnings and those types of things would need to be in place, because it's just the reality is that we live in a community that people don't, or follow for.
I think ignorance of the law is not an excuse. Now that you mention that, I would like to say one more thing, chief here. There was a number of people that complained about getting tickets for improper parking, and I know when this parking was initiated, how many warnings did the police force get out?
Oh, years were, year and a half were, we walked door to door.
But one ticket erased all of that goodwill.
Our guests are here one time. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry too, but the law was the law.
I agree that the warning was one year. I'm not saying that the police, I don't support that, but our guests are here often one time. And that's, I'm not saying they should get away with it, they shouldn't be ticketed, I might agree with that, but as far as that philosophy goes, it, we have a one-time deal with, I'd say eighty percent.
They are, they are.
Right.
Exactly.
They can sit here and they can say about the sign, it's all they want, we got twenty-five cars back in, you know, from it, something like, they're not the only person.
I agree.
The only thing I want to say is basically, if we keep this going through, I'd like to amend Steve's motion to include Strawberry Street Plaza and the loading zone, so we'd like to do this twice.
Well, what I was saying, and nobody's listening, so just let me.
It's not about listening.
No, just let me finish, we are.
Hold on, hold on, I know, but you gotta, we gotta present this to V-Dot, we gotta present this to V-Dot as a whole.
Exactly. But you don't have to say you're taking away a parking spot to V-Dot, the line on it, if you're changing the direction, yes.
No, but we don't want to back and repaint or anything.
I know, but we're working on phase two so that that recommendation for painting would be in place. You do not have to say that you're going to remove stripes in front of Strawberry Street Plaza to V-Dot.
But we're giving V-Dot the plans to do, change the lines around and give them, give you sheds for Patrick's building, that's got to be taken into consideration. The handicap is got to be taken into consideration.
That's in the proposal.
I know that, but then we got loading zones we're talking about, and then get rid of two parking stop, they didn't know that all was planned.
I agree with those things, but as far as Strawberry Street Plaza and taking lines away, no. Does V-Dot need to approve that, Larry? To take the, to take the lines away from the Strawberry Street Plaza?
That's what I'm trying to get, you need to V-Dot, they're too old.
They can change just to the parking pattern, and we got it right away. I mean, we can't, we just can't go out and paint it.
No, I'm not saying painted, I'm saying take the paint away.
Yeah, you would submit.
I understand that's the angle.
Is it helpful to do a two-minute kind of civic course on how this works?
Two minutes.
Okay. The first step on part of the town, which is already been working on as far as current, most plans that are currently funded, is to get a survey of the street. Did you recall how we got the back end angle parking in the first place? There's still the documentation sitting out in some of these board and commission meetings, some county work session somewhere, of what that survey plaque looked like. That survey plaque showed the striping in the current direction. That was submitted as part of the application. V-Dot's got to want to see exactly the specifications, the numbers, blah, blah. But the details of the parking stall looks like, detail of the signage, et cetera. Location of the signage along the street, they're going to need to see all that laid out by way of the survey plaque. That's not the hard part. The hard part is agreeing that this is what we want to submit, because once it's submitted, then their process takes place. If we change our mind again, then it's another submittal or a tandem to that application, and at a certain point, what's our priority sort of ceases to be their priority. So, the idea of getting one complete application and as fast as possible submitting it, they work on whether approve it or not approve it, and we get the information back. Once we get an approval back, then we will do this. We look into the contract out for the striping. One of the ways we saved money in two thousand and fifteen was that we used a contract that had already been approved for the V-Dot project. So, that was a simple change order. The town's going to have to go out and solicit a striping bids on our own, and another thirty days to that process, and the mobilization time before the striker can get out here. So, all of those things start ticking in, ticking in, ticking in. As long as this is months away, even for the time that we actually get the submittal submitted, so as soon as the footprint for the, all the parking spaces can be agreed on in the first place, that will expedite the start of it. So, I appreciate the phase two.
Right, I'm concerned that, and this was brought up in January twentieth, what does that mean, was I was not here? Well, why didn't all of these concerns that the council had come up so that the parking group could work through those and make this final recommendation? I don't.
I wasn't here either.
I'm confused, because this group has been working very hard, and some of this information tonight is brand new. And we have staff on it, we have planning commission on it, we've come a long way, it's kind of dumbfounded that it's just surprisingly new information, when we've been working since.
I'm surprised, I mean, I mean, they, they had to, so they said, they.
Looking at, that's what we're talking about, is that, of course, is the phase two in the phase one.
Yeah, just moving it up.
Yeah, just moving it up.
Right, because coming back again and going through this again, and going through all these steps again, I don't know how long it's taking to get to this.
No, just go back.
I'm pretty sure we'll take, I mean, if they're asking to remove two parking strips, it pretty much.
No, we're also asking that the crosswalk worked on and the loading zone, because that's also a striping. And we're full into that, but we're doing, everything that this group has done, has done a research, and done everything, and the recommendations are very specific, it's not just half-bastard. So, to get crosswalks and loading zones and all of those things in is going to, it's certainly going to be a little while. And I didn't understand tonight's approval to mean that those things in phase two would be approved as well. We're going to have to come back and go through the same process, through planning commission, public hearing.
Right, but the loading zone information is on Mason or on side street?
It's on Mason.
All right.
Both? Yeah, both, yes, both. But as far as what we're talking about, you know, I mean, there's a whole other series of things to go after, and the kind of ones in, in fact, between the side street as well.
No, we're not dealing with side streets, okay? We're not.
We're dealing with restriping, and that's what we're speaking about, that's going to be restriping too.
That's going to be another application.
That's correct, and there's more to come. And we'll talk about parking behind a library, and we'll talk about parking down bay, because there's a number of things that we'll be getting into in the future.
I just don't understand why these things don't come up. We may as well.
Things in particular.
Crosswalks, all of the spaces in front of Strawberry Street Plaza, I mean, it's been laid out several times what's in each phase. So, the information should have said, hey, we're going to want all of that in phase one before we come forward to this point.
Okay, I brought up the two spaces in front of Strawberry Plaza, because I was downtown just last weekend, and there were cars parked there and you couldn't see it.
Nobody disagrees, Steve. Nobody disagrees at all. It just happens to not be written in phase one as an item, like, remove the stripes in front of Strawberry Street Plaza.
Which it can be.
Were you sitting here, were you at it right now?
That's all it is, dude.
Right, but I would have heard the suggestion of perhaps trucks on the west side of Mason.
Right, that's a whole, that's got to go back to the group and then they need to work through that, and does that impact how the lines are done? No, right? So, I think that that can, that's a signage issue, and then we can address from the crosswalks and.
I think we need to stay in place to, I think there's more discussion over that.
Will, a lot more, because we've really done a lot of thought of traffic, traffic pattern, both cars as well as people, accessibility, because some of, just being, a lot of our curbs are one way or one side, and you can crosswalk it, but you need a hiker, you need a step stool to get up on the other side. You know, so there's, there's a lot to go into that.
I'll just go back to the motion on the table and say that it's good discussion, I certainly support as a policy matter us adapting this first phase as is discussed tonight, and how we need to incorporate that in some of the new finer points I'm offered over there that, but let's get this one on the table, vote on it, and move on.
All right.
Both?
Up next, harbor development certificate, thirty-foot meter drive.
All right, so this item is an eight hundred square foot addition to the shanty at thirty foot meter drive. It will be on the northwest corner of the existing structure to provide additional seating for guests to dine. It went through the Board of Zoning Appeals and was approved for variance to require thirty-foot waterfront setback November fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Harbor District Review Board met on January eighth, in motion to approve a harbor development certificate of the following conditions, first one being to provide a board and baton six-foot high fence extending from the northeast corner of the addition to the intersection of the loading pad and the golf parrot. Two, to provide a north elevation to Town Council for review, and three, provide a dimension site plan to Town Council for review. Couple of items, just to make sure that you guys are aware of, so there's, so the required parking spaces, one space one hundred square feet across floor area, so there's, with this addition, they would require twenty-four parking spaces total. The gravel lot next to them has around sixty spaces available, so they have ample parking there. The recommendation by staff to provide a visual screen, which is where that board and baton fence came from, that harbor had recommended, came from the, from section four point six point D of the ordinance that states that sites shall be designed and buildings should be warranted so that the loading zone areas are not visible from any of the project perimeters adjoining any agricultural or residential district or any public transitway. And this area that the recommendation was for is directly adjacent to the existing walking path on the north side of the addition, and so the recommendation was to screen that from loading, from loading operations there, and that open space will still be able to be met. That's all I've got.
So staff recommends approval of the Harbor.
I'll make a motion if you accept the staff recommendation.
Any discussion?
It's what's written, I guess. As written in with the condition that the applicant's goals is to provide your fence.
Can I interject for one second? You guys always read a lot of the, I mean, northeast corner, northeast corner of the lot would cross over the easement per the access to the shading from the town. It's actually, I think, was intended to be from the northwest corner.
The utility, how do you tell?
If we took from the northeast corner of the lot, we'd be going across the golf cart path.
It is the northwest corner.
And also, one more thing also too, I mean, just to be aware that twenty four hundred square feet of dining, or sixteen hundred square feet of dining in the physical premise inside, the additional eight hundred square feet bring us to twenty four hundred. That doesn't include our debt, which is forty by twenty plus an additional twenty one hundred. Twenty four hundred square feet is strictly what exists now, interior dining, not the debt, plus the proposed addition, but not the existing debt.
So I'll amend my motion to be northwest. Let's ask.
You'll have a sound to amend the motion.
About discussion.
If you don't mind, was that the Harbor Area Review Board did ask for a dimension site plan and an elevation drawing, which kind of appear here, although this wasn't exactly the dimensions I was looking for. I'm just wondering, did you have a survey done?
I haven't, not yet.
Is it under construction?
No, we can't, we can't begin.
And the elevation of the fence would either be out of scale or the E type of the addition is only six feet. So that fence will actually be much lower than it looks in this drawing.
Steve, is that something you guys can put up there? The elevations we had drawn were two scale, so I just, if I could see it, maybe I could.
Right here, I can't put it up here.
Can I, Rose?
Yes.
You're talking about only, okay.
See, this is pointed out as the fence. And that is.
Yeah, that scale, and that scale is off here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be, that would be only six feet.
Yeah, that's my thinking, okay.
You got a motion?
Yes, sir.
Yep. All right.
All right.
All right. Do business. Republican Port Authority, eight to vote.
Who's name? So, trying to make this quick. No, we got all the time in the world. I know. I like the social life.
Exactly.
As you know, March first every year is the deadline for applying for either carryover authority for existing projects, ADOC, or for new grants. The staff report does outline our current status of building the offshore breakwater, the fourth offshore breakwater. We will get bids in five days, on February twenty sixth. And then hopefully those crews will be good and we'll bring a recommendation to the council for award of that contract. I think we have a work session in the first Thursday of the month for the study.
March seventh.
Yeah, so if we, if all goes well, we'll turn that into a special meeting and then we can work the contract. And we can get building, we'll do it in the March. We have roughly a hundred ninety thousand dollars left of existing rags. I would expect if construction goes well, that all that money will be consumed before the end of fiscal year. But we never know around here, in all intents, our contract will go. So what we're recommending is requesting carryover of one hundred thousand dollars just as a safety measure to have that authority to get all of the fiscal year. So that is recommendation number one. The second one, if you recall the wave modeling effort that was done, consultant recommended two things to cut down the wave action orbit. The first thing was building the northern offshore breakwater. And the second thing was building inshore breakwater to replace the floating wave attenuator, which is typically referred to as ADOC if anything. And this is the most western one. And the idea of doing both of those things, the, in the winter, we have north, north, west waves that come down the bay and refract off the shoulder and into the harbor. What happens is it bounce off the southern breakwater, I'm sorry, the southern wall of facial concrete and ricochets back and forth across the harbor and do tremendous damage to the floating docks. I think in your report, in the Harbor Ness's report, he shows pictures of the east-west block of this essential border in half, this inboard ADOC, and I believe he's got another section of VDOC, the essential border in half. So the, the breakwater on the shore would prevent that wave action coming in from the north, north, west. The modeling effort suggested that we build ones seven hundred and thirty five feet long. Further you go north, the better you are because that just blocks that wave action coming in. I don't really expect that we'll be able to build all seven hundred and thirty five feet with the money we have available. I'm guessing it's gonna be around six hundred feet. The intent of the inshore breakwater was to protect against southwest waves during the summer, which happened last week, but they do happen. And then to take care of the residual action in the winter from northwest waves from that back to the port. So we've been working with Lightning McDonald to develop an inshore breakwater project. It actually had been worked on a year ago when we applied for the big grant. So we have all the preliminary design done. And that would entail building the sheet pile breakwater right in front of the wave attenuator. We have that, including a twelve foot dock boat, we would dock the boat, so people could still dock there. And then moving the wave attenuator over to the north side of the east west dock to provide some additional dock space. That preliminary estimate for that is a half a million dollars to do that. The Port Authority's maximum coverage is seventy five percent. So we could apply for a renewed Port Authority grant for three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And the town badge would be one twenty five, assuming we got the full agreement. So that would be the recommendation for phase two, I'm sorry, for, for the new breakwater. And there is a second phase of that that's developed to add finger peers to that relocated. But we're not requesting that one for that, we're not requesting that one for that at this time.
I'd like to say that we're asking for the grant money, look correctly if I'm wrong, if something happens on that. And we did authorize the grant funds as a matter of fact, we're to try to get it switched over to use it.
That's correct. Yeah, if we, if, for example, the council decided not to do all of that, then we would, once the grant's authorized, the next year, we'd request a carryover of the project and recast that in some other place.
I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we acted, we did within that cycle. When we were there, we just, if something else come up, we just called it off.
Yeah, I believe that was true. They're pretty easy to work with, as you know, and they want so far they've done. We've been very lucky that we've been able to do projects in the spending light. The, this last hundred ninety thousand dollars has been hanging around for a couple of years now. And I think that's one of the reasons we have this successful in addition area until this time.
Question I would have is, we're proposing five hundred here. Previously, we've had, in the meeting minutes, reporting seven hundred. Was it five hundred or seven hundred for this inner breakwater? Because I went back and I looked.
It was, it was a different project. It was, it was essentially phase one and two together. So it would, if you look at the diagram in the staff report, it's, we would be building just the first section, it's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty one feet, and relocating out. Then phase two, if the council wanted another project to increase capacity at the harbor, we would be extending that fixed breakwater north and then adding finger peers. Essentially, that was the original big project that was not approved. And that, I think that's what you're thinking about.
Okay, the modeling study, and I want to be clear because I can't relate to here, this phase one. The modeling study is just, here's an overlay of the harbor and it's, it's kind of a corner shape where it's turning east, west, north, south, where the breakwater is really, I think, north, south. I'm not sure what the diagram in the modeling study shows, what it's showing east, west, coming back to the shore.
That's the issue, why is it correct?
No, it's the physical model of the breakwater itself. All right, let me just, the breakwater, all right, the breakwater, you're saying is right in front of Dock A right now?
The, the inshore breakwater, yes, right in front of ADOC.
And there's nothing running east, west?
Not as far as the breakwater, there's a floating dock there that runs east, west.
Okay, I'm just saying I can't help because it's just an overlay diagram showing the study results. So I can't say physically what this thing looks like. It's gonna be crystal clear, the breakwater is in front of.
It's the harbor section in front.
Okay. Now, the other question I have is if I don't proceed to phase two, since I find that harbor protection is different from increased dock space.
That's correct.
All right? So I want to separate the thing we're here to protect the harbor, that if we don't proceed with phase two, I'm good for the engineering study, that model and study that are going with this phase one.
And that's what the recommendation is, phase one only.
Yeah. No, I understand, I just want to make sure if we don't ever get to phase two.
That's true. Now, there would be, you know, by extending the fixed breakwater north another hundred twenty feet, there would, it would provide some additional connection.
Well, I'm saying it's a whole different subject that we're talking about.
Right.
Hi, I'm Ben here. This is what we're talking about here for grant funding. I think it's possible we can get timeline play over, how all this stuff works.
But the issue is, Angus, we need to ask the Port Authority.
Which is fine, I'm all, but ask us for the money.
The first time we've been.
March first. And it's only, it's only phase one?
Right.
That's it. Yeah, I'd like to ask a question too.
Go ahead, ask one.
I want to clarify something, but first of all, thanks for giving this, for the breakwater to the spot it is. It's been a long time coming and I was glad to finally, as opposed to having a bid. I just need clarification on, this drawing is a little bit difficult to read. Phase one, is this hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty feet that replaces the floating dock? Or the floating wave attenuator? That thing's gonna be floated out and then up to the break, the bulkhead? No, we, we, it's held in with eight or ten anchor piles, so that we pull them and flip them around to the north side of the east west dock and we'll be repositioning it. But there are two red lines on this diagram, and one of them looks like it is attached which says phase one. Is this that?
I see a problem.
Yeah, that was like.
We didn't get the up one. This is basically where your fault is, Tom, I guess.
Uh huh. He needs items.
Yeah, well, I don't know. I have that problem, mine I have too.
Yeah, it's a repeat fault, it's a repeat fault, it's disgusting, sure.
So that's, okay, so this one goes to here and then the phase two is putting those fingers on.
And as well as this extension.
Extension, okay, much better.
I understand the confusion.
And I, and I want to emphasize the point that the mayor made, that should we get the grant and should we decide that there's a better solution to this, we can, then, we're not locked into doing this sheet pile bulkhead. No, we're not. Okay. Yeah, in fact, we attended the Don DePone show at the Port Authority, September fourteenth. And there were all people in there saying, well, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, you know. And they said, yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the mayor to request DPA to approve a carryover a hundred thousand dollars of these existing grants and to apply for the three hundred and seventy five paid for the new shore breakwater for phase one.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Conditional use permit after for a session from the Senate Public Hearing.
This is to set a public hearing for a hundred and sixty square foot, two square accessory dwelling unit at six point five on Grove Avenue. Let's see, so they will, they're meeting all of the zoning ordinance requirements, including parking, Wall Street parking. They're gonna have it, they have accessibility from the rear and from the side of their house as well. But this is just a set of public hearings, so staff permits to, set of public hearing date for the proposed conditional use permit.
I move that we set a public hearing of March fifth for the proposed professional leave permit.
Could we have the joint commission? That's what the bike commission's having a hearing, they're, correct?
But we've advertised that it's not the joint public hearing.
Right, so could we have it at our next meeting, beginning of our next public hearing?
No, we've already got two public hearings, getting one fourteen.
What about the summer? We don't have summer.
It's not enough time for the advertising.
Forgot, I said, that's much.
So March twenty, when it's the next, could we do it then? Is there a need for you to opt in?
All right, so I'll amend my motion to March twenty first.
Take a second.
Second?
I'll go.
One question. The link to the planning commission, I just have drawings. Could you include those drawings with the public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, here you go, mayor.
All in favor?
All right.
opposed? So in accordance with text amendments, Article four or Section four point five?
All right, so this is to set a public hearing for two text amendments in Article four. One being section four point five point one in the table of parking standards to include a separate. So there's two columns, nature of use and then what the standard is for the parking requirements. The nature of use would be a designation for mixed use development. And then the parking standard would be one space per one veteran dwelling unit. Otherwise, two spaces per dwelling unit plus one additional space per two hundred square feet of commercial gross floor area. That's the first one. And I'll just explain that a little bit, incorporating a blanket parking standard for all commercial. Incorporating a blanket parking standard for all commercial uses within a mixed-use development, um, is what this would allow rather than taking each separate use, whether it be retail restaurant or other, and using that use as parking standard requirement. The reason being, um, a lot of times in mixed-use developments, they're not, uh, they're not sure what exactly is gonna be going in there, they just feel like, you know, white ox. So, this kind of, the two hundred square feet per gross floor area, where it's kind of a middle ground between, uh, those three types of uses. And then the second one is to section four point five point F, point one, point K. Uh, the proposed text amendment, um, would be, sorry, let me read this. Uh, to leave a sentence in that paragraph stating the following, for new construction mixed-use developments, for new construction mixed-use developments, parking stalls for residential units shall be identified by appropriate signage. And it's just a set of public hearings, and that's the recommendation.
I mean, well, before, before I make a motion, March fifth. Is that, okay, is a date for this?
It's the same process, it's gotta be-
March twenty-first? Okay, so I'll make a motion that we recommend that town council set the public, uh, hearing leading date of March twenty-first for this proposed text amendment.
Give us a second. Any discussion, Steve? Set a public hearing to vacate public right-of-way, that's that number ninety, that's eight of that, one page.
Mayor, Mr. Council, uh, that parcel is, um, a small road corridor previously owned by the town, dated, looking at the pounds, uh, in nineteen ninety-six. And that as an accessway to the old stiff. The conveyance from the town to the, to North Hampton County included the, uh, requirement of the sole purpose of the public right-of-way. The property owner adjacent to, uh, that particular lot, uh, had requested, uh, both to the town and the county the ability to acquire that lot, uh, for the purpose of, um, bringing some other power parcels together as well as for transportation, as a, as a transit corridor. In, on August sixteen of twenty seventeen, the town received a letter which is attached. Uh, you see the information there from, from North Hampton County, uh, attorney's office, as well as a physical description of the, uh, parcel. And then the D book information about the conveyance of the, of the lot. It's actually, uh, the letter dated from Southwest Investors, uh, request for support from the town should, um, that, this particular parcel be conveyed to, uh, from North Hampton County to, uh, Southwest Investors. And at that time, as they've shown in the minutes, this was discussed at the September seventh, twenty seventeen, uh, council special meeting. As the minutes showed, there were no objections from the town to provide support for Southwest Investors, uh, to purchase the property if the county decided to sell or abandon the parcel. The county did decide to sell the parcel and the, uh, parcel is still designated as a right-of-way. Due to the state statute, that, uh, status of right-of-way has to be vacated. Otherwise, it retains, it retains its use as a right-of-way. So, that is what this, um, requested for, is to set a public hearing date of March fourteenth for the public hearing pursuant to section fifteen point two dash two thousand and six, to formally vacate the public right-of-way, uh, as, that was dedicated, um, back in nineteen ninety-six. This is a lot no longer owned by the town, uh, and, and right now, no longer owned by North Hampton County either. It still carries, it still carries the status of the public right-of-way now.
I was gonna ask the question, has the county already been in their interest?
I don't remember that.
Okay. So, all the interest that we have left in this is just a residual interest by saying, if, when we, the town that did it to the county for stiff was, as long as it's public driveway. So, if it's not the public driveway any longer, that's all we've gotten here, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we set March fourteenth as the date for public hearing for the statutory, uh, requirement to vacate the public right-of-way at this particular subject lot.
Give us a second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any larger comments?
Okay, real quick, um, the staff's been working hard on their department budgets. Um, at this point, every staff member has had an evaluation done. Those have been submitted, uh, to manager's overview from those, uh, evaluations and discussions from departments. Uh, let's totally establish the working salary for the twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty budget. Uh, over in, uh, HR, they're still working on the health insurance. Those two parts, those two pieces are figured out, you can make a substantial dent on the progress of the budget as far as personnel's concerned, salary and health insurance. Uh, otherwise, the departments were asked to turn in a working budget for next fiscal year not greater than two percent. Most have done that, they're gonna be some new asks, there's one new, uh, staff line has been proposed. Comprehensive plan project needs to finish out. Uh, so there are some, you know, individual departments that where, uh, they've asked for more than last year, but most of those operational lines are being kept at the two percent level. So, uh, staff's worked hard on that. Uh, the goal of the working budget by, uh, March one, uh, is likely to be met, at least by way of the budget brief, if not the actual putting the books together. Uh, the actual putting the books together included all the department sheets and the, um, physical, visual graphics to, to help, uh, illustrate some of the issues, uh, in the budget have already been, um, worked on. So, I'd like to say everybody's gonna get a binder on March the first. I'd like to say that what I am gonna say is you're gonna get a budget and brief in Dropbox on March the first and an actual physical book probably following week. But that's where we are. That, and that also includes, uh, capital needs. So, that's both small projects as well as, uh, capital, uh, equipment, in this case, police car, um, and street sweeper. So, look forward to the budget, uh, just around the corner. Second, presentation, uh, of the, uh, preservation plan. Monday, March the fourth, six o'clock in this building. So, anyone interested in the progress, or the getting progress, uh, of the preservation plan, be here on March the fourth, six o'clock. And then, those of you who live up on the, uh, north end of town or who's been around the north end of town, you know it has some interesting goings-on and off the streetlights as part of the phase two bra- trail project. They come on and they go off. Sometimes they burn during the daytime, sometimes they don't burn in the evening. Sometimes they come on a certain point in the evening and turn off before day, before sunlight. This is the way this has been explained to me, uh, by Dave Farber. So, Dave and I got this discussion. We look at the usual suspects, uh, moisture intrusion into the box. Looks like a real issue, and we've got all variety issue with a redundancy. So, the photoelectric cell, which should be simple enough, turns on in dark, turns off in the light, is also being overridden by, um, a timing mechanism built into the lights, which is turning on and off at various times, as opposed to just relying on the photoelectric cell. Customs, things we can't make up, customer service, uh, customer support for this lighting system is in Montreal. So, it's a, uh, going back and forth. But it's, and again, I live in a neighborhood too, and I remember, what, two Christmases ago, two Decembers ago, um, when it was about twelve days, you know, a pitch black. And, um, that's not okay, that's not okay in any neighborhood. Uh, so, um, that's all getting, that's all getting worked in. All I can say is if you do see lights on at some point in the evening, and you see them off at other points in the evening, that is correct, that right now is the status of those lights. So, um, that was being worked, it's been a recurring problem with the phase two lights. As are my comments.
Andy? But, thanks, right, at the, the party, I want to do a big shout out to the Main Street group and subcommittee for really putting a lot of effort into getting that done. I'm just glad that you've had so much response from the town because when we first did it, we didn't have any. So, it's really good to see the town really pick it up and everybody's being involved in, um, all the stuff that's happening now. It's not only that, there's a bunch of other stuff that everybody's been being involved in, which is really good.
I'll lead into that, we invited everybody, you shouldn't have seen it by now, but the rub-up, winter rub-up for Main Street is on Monday night at the Palace at six. I hope that everybody would be able to come, um, and get updated on all the good things that are happening, see, and maybe from a housing perspective, thank all of the volunteers that have put a lot of effort into projects this year. As a, as the Eastern Shore Tourism rep for Cape Charles, I just wanted to update you guys that we've had two, um, meetings, January and then yesterday. Really good, um, efforts being made there. I'm, um, really happy we've come into a, um, some challenges to work through. Um, there was a website that has been started, um, in really two thousand and seventeen. So, it's almost two years into it, it hasn't been launched. Um, we're really trying to get that to the finish line. It's a great website, it will make a huge difference for the, huge difference. If you've ever looked at the current Eastern Shore Tourism website, it's really, really not very good. So, this will be, will take things into a new na- level and it really should promote tourism very well. Um, one thing that is super exciting, and I'll say off the record until tomorrow morning, but I want to share with everyone, um, all three, Shinkati, Eastern Shore Tourism, and Cape Charles. And Cape Charles was actually under North Hampton County, Chambers helped win it. We applied for ten thousand dollar, ten thousand dollar grants for each community and we received all thirty thousand dollars. So, um, that's for the fifty years of love, um, celebrating Virginia Tourism's fifty years of love, Virginia's for lovers. So, there's gonna be a lot of exciting things happening within Cape Charles and up and down the shore. It's true partnership kind of happening in that. So, it's a really good win. There were thirty, um, I think thirty-eight applicants and they actually ended up giving all the ten K because they were so impressed with the efforts that came through. So, but ten-three on the Eastern Shore is, is really worth it. Yeah, um, and then, uh, the other news is that we did also receive a marketing leveraging grant, grant from Virginia Tourism for five thousand K, and it's a matching grant. So, that's ten thousand dollars that will be spent toward launching Cape Charles, Virginia's Cape. Um, the campaign is called Discover, um, Cape Charles, Virginia's Cape. And it'll be a series of, um, pillars that you've seen, kind of the banners that we looked at, will be themed toward that and, um, launched throughout the summer. We'll try to tie it in and double money here on the fifty years of love so that we're getting the most out of our, our dollars there. So, a lot of good, good efforts. A real shout out to Jane McKenley, one of our volunteers, who helped me with the fifty years of love grant. So, it's always exciting.
Any applicants for program director?
We've got a lot, a lot of good interest. Um, we've got, we received a lot of questions, um, and follow-up on the program director, um, position. Um, and then, I, I can't remember if I sent this, you know, I, I think I dragged it about, I don't know if I sent it today. Um, in looking at the year, kind of a review in that position, we figured out that there's probably about ten hours of that job that are admin type of work. So, we brought somebody on board that's gonna do that and it allows them for the program director position to focus on those, the bigger strategic things and working on projects to get them done, all within the same budget confines. But, um, we already have that position filled, um, so that person started and it will help in the transition.
It's a patient thing?
It is. So, it fits within that same budget that is allocated for the program manager, um, allocation. We just kind of rework no nerves and all that. Looking good.
So, this ten thousand dollar, or of them, no, the other, you got the requires a match. Who's that match coming from?
From our marketing dollars, you know, within the Cape Charles Main Street budget, about forty-four thousand of that money is to manage marketing for Cape Charles as a whole. And so, allocated within their things are things like maps and, um, rack cards and those types of pieces. So, that's already, money's already there and this is a free five thousand to match that is efforts. The main piece that will be is we're designing the-